Welcome to the City of Marshalltown Council. Our agenda tonight reflects that we are at 10 West State Street in the City Council chambers. Today's date is June 11th. It's 5:30 PM. Notice to public, the mayor and council will welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the items that are on the agenda. You're required to step to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes. We have the three-minute timer in front of me here so that others may speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any specific council member. It is at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. We've been called to order. Would those who are able please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Goudy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Good. Got a full deck tonight. Under the mayor's council and administrative comments, I'd like to make two comments. I got the privilege today of addressing the veteran, at the Veterans Home, all of the volunteers who put in thousands and thousands of hours of volunteer work there. And they were so appreciated by the residents who live out there that was fun to see that. And it's just one of those feel-good things that we have in this town that you may not recognize, and I just wanted to comment on that. The other one's kind of a bad news, good news deal, and that is it's now become public that Thompson True Value Building is likely to not be resurrected as the building that it is. That's the bad news. The good news is that the Thompson family has every intention of rebuilding and rebuilding downtown. So I think in two years, we can look back and be glad that they've decided to keep a pivotal retail business in our downtown area. So that's the good news. With that, does anyone else up at the council table here have a comment?
I have a couple notes. One, we have a new judge, which is awesome, District Judge Bethany Curry. So that's really wonderful for Marshalltown, I think, and Marshall County. And two, we finally, my family and I finally made it out on the Iowa River Bike Trail, recreational trail, and we didn't walk too much of it, but from Wilson Circle to about Ninth Street and back. And we really enjoyed it and can't wait to do the other stretch, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, at this time, Diana, would, may I embarrass you by just having you come forward because I'd like to show everybody what we got here. Very nice holder for it, and it's called the Award of Financial Reporting Achievement. It's presented by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada to the Finance Department of the City of Marshalltown, and it reads, "The Award of Financial Reporting Achievement is presented to the Government Finance Officers Association to the individuals designated as instrumental in their government unit achieving a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. A certificate of achievement is presented to those government units whose annual financial reports are judged to adhere to the program standards and represent the highest awards in government financial reporting," signed by their executive director. Congratulations for doing this, and you do it every year.
I just wanted to acknowledge the rest of my team. Brian Demas, Accounting Manager, Tanya Klosterman, Accounting Specialist, and Deb Tricky, Accounts Payable, who helped in putting this all together. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Wonderful. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve. Second?
Yeah, we'll go with the Weren second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Carrie, Madam Secretary, would you read the items of the consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the council minutes of May 29th, the bill list in the amount of $1,916,837.21. Approve tobacco permits expiring June 30, 2019, cases on East Main, Iowa Avenue, North Third Avenue, South 12th Avenue, West Lincoln Way, Dollar General Store on South Ninth Street and South Center Street, East Side Liquor and Groceries on East Nevada Street, F.A. 786, 114 North Center Street, Family Dollar Store on South Third Avenue, Fairway Stores, Get 'n Go on South Center and West Lincoln Way, Golden Karen, 134 East State Street, Golden Land, 31 North Center Street, Hy-Vee Drugstore, Hy-Vee Food, Hy-Vee Gas, Iowa Veterans Home Canteen, Jiffy, Quick Star on South Center Street, South Sixth Street, South Third Avenue, Marshall BWS, 11 North Third Avenue, Marshall Tobacco and Vape Outlet, 19 West Main Street, Shag T-Shirts and More, 2500 South Center Street, Walgreens, and Walmart. Resolution approving an agreement with the Marshalltown Regional Partnership for the purposes of operating a convention and visitors bureau.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve all of those?
We did.
Oh, sorry. Who did that last time? Let's go on to, we have no motions under G, under H for reports. The first one is Chief Tepper.
Good evening, Mike Tepper, Marshalltown Police Department. You should have had in your packet or received electronically our annual report for 2017. I'm not going to go through it page by page, but I did want to highlight a couple things. First thing I want to do is thank our team members for putting together this bad boy because it's quite a project, trust me. And Leisha Hunter and all of our team leaders do an exceptional job every year of compiling this report, and a lot of work and effort goes into it. But more than that, I just want to thank the members of the Marshalltown Police Department for everything that they do on a daily basis to serve and protect in our community. You hear me talk frequently about serving our community with passion and compassion, and I truly believe that we are living up to those values. And you have an exceptional police force here, and I have nothing to do with it. It's the men and women that serve each day that deserve all the credit, and they're doing a fantastic job. So, one thing that struck me when I first started reviewing the report is our calls for service went up significantly. We had 31,000 calls for service last year compared to 26,000 the year before. So that's a significant increase in workload. We filed greater than 4,000 police reports. Takes a lot of time and effort, nearly 2,400 arrests, more than 2,600 traffic citations. That seems like a big number, but we made more than 6,400 traffic stops. So if you're stopped for a motor vehicle violation in Marshalltown, chances are pretty good you're going to get a warning. But we did make a lot of stops last year. One thing I'd like to point out is we put a lot of effort into our training, and our use-of-force reports, use-of-force incidents went down dramatically. We had 76 use-of-force incidents in 2016, or 17, or 16, I'm sorry, and we only had 57 last year. And that seems like a big number, but when you consider we had over 31,000 calls, 2,400 arrests, and we only used force 57 times. So we're making a lot of efforts with our training and with de-escalation and crisis intervention, and I think that's paying off, and we're seeing some positive results. Violent crime in Marshalltown is low. It's not, contrary to rumor and myth in the Des Moines news media sometimes, we don't have a lot of violent crime in Marshalltown. We do have a decent amount of property crime, though, and a decent amount of crimes related to drugs, and both of those issues are connected. Drugs many times will drive the property crime figures that you see in your community. And so those are both issues that we continue to devote a lot of resources to. And you also hear me talk frequently about family violence and sex crimes related to child abuse. Those are issues in every community, and we devote a lot of resources to those two issues as well. What I am very proud of is our community outreach efforts. I think they're working. I think we've seen a change in the culture of the Marshalltown Police Department, and we have people embracing community outreach efforts now. And I could stand up here for an hour and talking about the different programs, different things that we do. And you see in my weekly reports, we usually do three or four things every week that are related to community outreach. So we're doing a lot of good things with community outreach, and that's important. Our body camera program is going strong. We're approaching two years with that program, and that's proven to be a valuable tool for us. And again, along with community outreach, just the various partnerships and collaborations that we have with our law enforcement partners, but also business partners, the school district, a lot of public and private partnerships that help us do our job. You've heard before that, you know, we can't be everywhere at once. And in order to make a true impact on crime and a true impact in solving problems in our community, we have to have those partnerships with the community. And I think all of our outreach efforts, it requires a lot of resources, a lot of effort, but they're paying off. And we're seeing reductions in crime, and I'm very proud of the work that our men and women at the Police Department are doing. So I want to thank the City Council, City Administrator Kinzer, for all the support that you provide to us because we couldn't do our job without you. But more importantly, I think I need to thank the community. We have tremendous community support here, and that does not go unnoticed. I see it every day, and we really appreciate the support we have in our community for law enforcement, for public safety. And I think as a community, we're doing a good job tackling some difficult problems at times. So having said that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this report.
Any questions?
I have a comment. One example of the community support is the Vest for the Best Program. We got an email today that we've hit the $75,000 mark.
Yeah. I was being conservative with that figure. It's actually higher than that. But that's a great example of community outreach, and the building that we're building, the police fire station that we're building, that would not be happening if it wasn't for the community support and a lot of hard work that the fire department and the police department, members of those departments are putting in to serve the community. So we appreciate everything this community does for us.
We appreciate you and your force, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, with the advent of body cams and so on, how are we doing with our record storage?
Data storage?
Data storage.
Yeah. It's getting expensive. You want to give me some more money? I'll take it. No, we're doing okay. We're doing okay, but that is, the data storage part of this project has always been the biggest concern that I've had. And the cameras are around 800 bucks apiece. I mean, that's a pretty big investment right there. But the long-term data storage is the thing that we need to continue to watch. Right now, we're okay because we did a good job investing at the front end, and we're doing okay, and we have money in our CIP still annually for a couple more years at least to help us with this project. But that's something we have to watch long-term because we're keeping every video for a minimum of 180 days, okay? And those are just the videos that we don't suspect that we need. So if it's a video on a traffic stop, or an arrest, or a use-of-force incident, or a crime that we're investigating, we're keeping those videos long-term, and that requires a lot of data storage. And the other thing that it requires is a lot of staff time because it takes a lot of time to download the video and to catalog it and make sure it's getting where it needs to go.
Anything else? Well, thanks, Chief.
Thank you again.
You and I were at a meeting at noon today for Crime Stoppers, and that camera endeavor is going well, too. There are now cameras out on Old Highway 30, Raycom, the two spots on, is it Anson?
Two spots on Anson, there's one over here behind Central Street.
Right. And then I know 13th Street is looking at getting cameras out there, too. So that's rolling. Thank you. All right. Our next report is Jenny Utter about the Central Business District.
Jenny Utter, Marshalltown Central Business District, 16 East Main. First, I want to thank you all, the City Council, for your continued support of MCBD Main Street program. Our affiliation with State Main Street and National Main Street is vital to our success, and we've had a wonderful relationship with them since 2002 and proud to have that continued. In your packet, I provided you with our strategic plan for 2019 through 2020, and it's a lot to read, a lot to get through, but we wanted to give you an idea of what's on our agenda, what's on our horizon, and what we're going to be up to in the next couple of years. We have a lot planned. I also gave you a sample of our membership information that will be sent out throughout the community. And the second page of that outlines the incentives for people to join the organization and be part of beautification of the downtown and all the projects that we do. And one of the projects just went up recently, June 4th, all the flower baskets went up. This is no small task. There are 96 baskets from Third Avenue to Third Street, and we have over 20 volunteers that get up about 5:30, 6 o'clock every single morning to water those. So I want to give a shout-out to all the volunteers that generously do that, spend their time getting up and doing that every morning. And to all of the community folks who provide donations that support this project. It costs about $12,000 to run this whole program. The flowers alone cost $9,600. It's about $100 a basket. There's 18 way petunias in each one. Isle of Green does a fantastic job of growing those for us every year, and if they, something happens to them, they always replace them. And we get comments all year round about how beautiful they are, so we're always happy to see those go up. We have some exciting things in the works. Wednesday, we are going to start celebrating Restaurant Week. That's not until September. However, we're going to have a workshop where Julie Dunker from the Iowa Restaurant Association will be there, as well as Terry Poe Busch Camp from Main Street, Iowa, to help us plan for celebrating the restaurants in our community, not just Main Street, but throughout the community. So this is a collaboration between the state, myself, Val Ruff from Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Linda Olberding from the Chamber. And so this year, we want our theme to be Taste the Difference. Marshalltown is really fortunate that we have so many ethnic choices and different restaurants to choose from, and we want people aware of those differences and to sample all the great food that's available. We also, in October, will be having our Treasures Tour again this year. That's October 13th. And for those of you who don't know, this is a tour of all of, or a sampling of the upper-story housing in the downtown, from beautiful lofts and apartments to residences that are in the downtown, and they're so impressive. You get to see the rooftop gardens and the fabulous renovation projects that have been done. So those, the tickets will start going on sale at the Marshalltown Art Festival that's coming up. Otherwise, you can contact me, or we'll get it out in the paper where you can pick up those tickets. We'll only sell 200 of those, so they go pretty fast. And we're beginning to plan our holiday stroll even now. We were fortunate to get a grant from the Marshalltown County Community Foundation to rent a skate, ice skating rink again this year. It was so popular last year. Bethany, you loved that with your kids. And so we're going to do that again, and it should be bigger and better than it has been before, so we're looking forward to all of those plans. So busy, busy. Our four committees are always planning, and we always need more volunteers. So if you feel like watering plants or helping with any of these projects, let us know. We also need, for the Treasures Tour hosts for these properties, so if you're interested in doing that, give me a call. What else can I tell you? Do you have any questions about all of the information?
Can you explain what it would mean to be a host?
Sure. We have people that stand at the bottom of the stairs and one that stop at the top of the stairs to invite people in, kind of crowd control, that kind of stuff. It's, the tour lasts about four hours total, and so you get to greet people as they come up. And then we have a pre-tour tour for the volunteers that help with that. So it's fun.
So the host doesn't have to know a lot about the building there?
No, and in fact, we always print a tour guide, and so all the information about the building is in that, and so you can refer to that and hand those out as well.
Every time you come, I say that is the most fascinating thing I've done, the two that you've already sponsored. It really is really fascinating to see some of those buildings.
Some of them are, you've seen before, but we have brand-new buildings that you've never seen the upstairs in. So, and there's one that always amazes people every time we show it, so it'll be a good time. There'll be six buildings that people get a tour.
And the art festival is moving to the town square.
That's right. We're so excited. This is going to be a big deal, and we're delighted that they're coming downtown, and there'll be lots and lots of events with that as well.
Any other questions or comments for Jenny?
Question here. Jenny, as you know, we had an incident in town where a building collapsed with a business, True Value, to name it. I happened to be in here today looking for a couple of parts, and Dave Thompson was kind enough to greet me at the door and get what I needed. However, I was amazed at the damage done. I don't know, and I'm asking out loud, maybe a rhetorical question, but what type of economic impact does this have to downtown? Do you know anything about that? Have you visited, in fact?
Well, you know, anytime we lose a business in downtown, it hurts us economically. It's a big loss. And so we hope that the plans will be for him to stay downtown. That benefits everyone if that happens. And, you know, Jessica and Michelle and I have talked about what incentives are there, what help is there to help anyone who has a loss in their building or needs repair. There, you all have a city incentive grant for building code upgrade, for facade improvement. Those help. There's also rehabilitation grants that are out there if they so choose to apply for those. So, yeah, it's a hardship for everybody when we lose buildings and businesses.
I guess I'm encouraged by what the mayor said on the desire to stay. I think we should be all aware of that, patronize the business as they have to move out and maybe, you know, reconstruct. So it's very much a very important economic development area for any business to suffer loss or be temporarily or long-term out of their location, so I'm hopeful.
The family has indicated on social media that they are going to rebuild downtown. They may need to relocate for a year or two while that building goes up, and then they do intend to have it be either at the same site or very close to where it is.
Well, and there are several options for them in the downtown if they wanted to expand, and I'm thinking they do. So time-dimerly, I'm sure we'll work with them and has been on what those options might be and help them through that process.
He was in the building when another rafter came down.
Holy cow.
They bolted through the door, yeah. But he has been spending a lot of time with the family trying to figure things out.
Jenny, have you been down there and talked to them about these grants that are available so they know what, to give them some direction on where to go? Have you done that?
Well, some of my board members have been, yes.
No, have you?
I have not, no.
Okay.
Just to clarify, too, there's been conversations between myself and Tom today related to some of that as well.
Okay. So I think, I think when we have a major business, and it is a major business, and I would suggest that the people in power in this community, that you all go down there. I think, I think our city administrator ought to go down and visit and find out. I went down today because I'd heard that it looked like a bomb had went off, and it does. It's a mess. I'm sure glad I don't have to clean that up because it's going to take a while. But I think we all, every organization in this town, and especially the downtown group, ought to be down there knocking on his door trying to help him. So we keep him downtown because that's where we want him.
The best thing that we have as a city is an updated urban renewal plan for our downtown area, and so I think that's where we're best positioned to have those conversations. And you, as the council, did that last year, made that update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One other final comment. The facade is now actually changing, too, on the Kibbe Building on the downstairs, so that's fun to see. It's going to be done soon.
That, her commercial space will be done by July 1, by the way. So, and if you haven't seen it yet, it is beautiful.
Is that for the wine and cheese?
Everything will be done.
Great. Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks.
Okay. We're up to item I resolutions. Madam Secretary, please read the first one.
We have a tabled item, resolution to approve amendment number five to the urban renewal plan for the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Two.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move we take it off the table.
Is there a second?
A second.
Other tie.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Now that it's off the table, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So apparently we have a public notice issue.
That's the item 17.
Oh, did I jump ahead? I'm sorry. Okay. I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we have just a little update on, because last week we tabled it and didn't have any really good discussion on it?
Correct. So at our last meeting on May 29th, we held the public hearing on this. This is amendment to our East Side Urban Renewal Area, which is more often described as our industrial urban renewal area. And the purpose of this amendment is to add in public improvement projects as well as to set parameters for the council to consider development agreements within that area as well.
Jessica, that's inclusive of East Merle Hibbs Road area and that area to the east?
You are correct. It does go up and include JBS, but is not a continual swath, but basically is kind of from Eighth Avenue, Eighth Avenue all the way over to 18th Avenue and including the opposite side of 18th, the east side of 18th Avenue as well, making its way down past Olive Street. Actually, I was going to say it does not go all the way down to East Merle Hibbs. I think it stops at the Governor Road and then continues down to, on 18th Avenue, continues down to where the Menards location is Midwest Manufacturing.
So it does not include East Merle Hibbs, the gravel?
No, we're not adding any land to this one. I believe that would require us to add some land. That was not the purpose in doing this at this point, but that's always something that could come back to the council at some point, and a larger planning discussion should be something we discuss.
Okay, I understand. Any other questions or comments? Well, let's call the roll.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, item number two, please.
Resolution approving a contribution of $3,000 to the Marshalltown Fourth of July fireworks celebration.
Your Honor, I'd like to move that we spend $5,000 for the fireworks so that we make sure they don't go in the hole this year. And it's a, it's an activity that the entire public
And it's an activity that the entire public in this community can enjoy, so I would move that the resolution be approved, but making the contribution at 5,000 instead of 3,000.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Can you remind me where the fireworks is shot from?
They are shot from the fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, thank you.
If there is no further discussion, let's call the roll on this one.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Very good. Read resolution, or the third resolution, if you would, Madam Secretary.
Resolution approving property donation from Dennis Grabenbauer and Barbara Grabenbauer and accepting quitclaim deed.
Ann Selmas, Park and Rec Director. We have been offered a 3.5 acre land donation at Bicentennial Park from Dennis and Barbara Grabenbauer. This land gift is verily timely as we work to expand recreational opportunities on the west side of Marshalltown. Our acceptance of this parcel is in keeping with our goal of providing recreational opportunities for all ages and abilities in our diverse city. The 2018-2028 Park and Recreation Master Plan recommends that we establish connections from the bicentennial soccer fields to the playground equipment and add amenities such as a prairie path, a natural playscape, and seating space with views to the soccer fields. Possible plans for this parcel in the future include a prairie walking path and perhaps disc golf tee pads. We think it is in the best interest of the city to accept this land donation.
I move for approval, your honor.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just need to make one comment. I'm going to vote no, and the reason I'm going to vote no is because we are having difficulty hiring enough people to take care of what we already got. And we have added two parks already to our system that nothing's been done to, and we're going to add a third one, and we don't have anybody to take care of them. I think we ought to do, either we need to raise our part-time wages so that we can hire people to help take care of these things, or we shouldn't be making our system big enough that we can't take care of it. If we're going to have them, let's take care of them. So, that's the reason for my vote.
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to commend Grabenbauer's for their work in the community. I know Barb served on the I River Hospice Board for many years, and Dennis has been a county supervisor and done a lot for the community.
Your honor?
Ms. Martin?
I'd like to add my concern to the widespread of responsibilities that are growing within the Park and Recreation Department. We're understaffed, period. We also cannot hire for what we're paying. People expect clean mowed parks with upkeep, painted shelters, all of that. The job simply cannot be done without people power, and that needs to be recognized one way or the other, and it's going to cost some more to adequately staff this department.
My question would be that if we don't accept the donation at this time, with the timeline or with the future plans would be otherwise there?
Well, right now, we don't have any plans for the land. We'll just let it sit the way it is, but I don't know what Dennis's plan would be if we didn't accept it. I mean, there's no plans for us right now to develop it in any way, so.
Your honor, I feel that this is a good donation for the city and that we should accept it, and as we look at what needs to be done in the future and as our plans move forward, we can address the other issues that are involved in it as well. But I think we need to take advantage of this opportunity of someone giving us a parcel that can connect to our existing programming that we have in our parks of recreation, and we should encourage that type of movement and accept the donation.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Well, I consider Ms. Selmas our resident expert in parks and rec, and she seems to think this is a good idea and that it is working toward the future, and that, and she has vision beyond today and beyond this summer. Her department is doing a ton of work. I'm looking at the weekly update, just what happened in the last week, and there was installation of new hinges on the diving boards, put a new grill out at Bicentennial Park, worked at Turtle Park on the benches, asphalt chips near the dog park. I mean, there are a lot of things going on, and I know you use contractors for a lot of the mowing, so you seem to think that this is, I mean, you agreed with the idea of taking Bicentennial Park on, you know, and giving up the Anson Park piece, so. I say yes.
When I was on Park and Rec, one of the parks was actually kept up by the neighbors, the one over pretty much by the Summit Street Bridge. Are they still doing that? And I wonder if there aren't other parks that would have neighbors that would be willing to help out.
We have an adopt a park program, and all of our parks have been adopted, so we do have people helping to pick up garbage and branches, and let us know if there's a major maintenance issue that we need to get right on, since we're not in every park every day.
Okay, thank you.
I would just, I'd like to mention to Ms. Weren that this has nothing to do with the Anson Park.
Well, I understand that, but that, it's just one other piece that happened at about the same time, right? It's the same park, and it's...
It's way in behind it.
I understand, yep. It's, I think of it as the overall park development.
Any other comments? If not, let's have the roll call.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Lamer? Yes.
Your honor, I think we had some people in the public that wanted to make some comments on that one.
Before the vote.
Before the vote. I'm sorry.
I doubt we can have a revote, but I'm happy to hear from whoever wanted to speak on it.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Your appraisal for this property says that, in their opinion, that the maximum productive value of this property is to be single-family residential development. So, from a city standpoint and a development standpoint, this is a developing area for housing, and you're basically taking that off the map. You're creating a dead-end road by doing this, but you've already voted, so it makes no difference.
That has carried. Let's go on to the, reading the next resolution, please.
Resolution approving a reorganization of the records division to create a full-time parking enforcement position.
Good evening again. Mike Tepper, Marshalltown Police Department. As you know, we have a significant amount of retirements occurring in our organization this year, and one of those retirements is Ann Davis, who's been our long-term record supervisor, and she's actually leaving us at the end of this month. So, we've been taking a look at a lot of different things within the police department regarding reorganization, and one of the areas we've looked at is records, and we've looked at parking enforcement as well, to see how we might be a little more proactive and efficient with some of those duties. And I know some of you are Facebook fans, by the way, if you saw the conversation on Facebook regarding yard parking. You can now feel my pain, the things that I deal with every day. But we think, in fact, we know, we know that we can reorganize the structure of our records unit and still maintain efficiencies and enhance parking enforcement efforts as well. So, what we're proposing is that we would eliminate the record supervisor position, and right now, we have two and a half positions serving in records, but one of them is a supervisor. We would eliminate that position. We'd still have two and a half records clerks, records clerk positions. We can still get the work done. We can still do the things that we need to do, and with that savings, that would allow us to increase the parking enforcement position from a halftime position to a full-time position. So, that person would still enforce the downtown parking, but there are other areas within our community that need some attention, and the police officers can't always get there. This month, we are enhancing our efforts with parking enforcement, and the cops are out writing a lot of parking tickets, but we're not always able to do that. So, and I know the 13th Street area is getting busy and maybe needs some attention with parking enforcement, and the yard parking issues that we've talked about a lot over the seven years that I've been here is an area that we can give more attention to as well. And so, our proposal would be that we reorganize the records division and end up with a full-time parking enforcement position, and you should have a memo in your packet outlining all that. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief, I have one question. How does the salary ranges between the two positions, are you going to be okay? Is the half position now is probably being paid a little bit less than what the parking?
Well, currently, the person that occupies the half records clerk position also occupies the half parking position, so she has a full-time job, okay? So, I'm confident, I'm very confident, that we're going to be able to hire a full-time parking person, because that job comes with benefits, okay? So, I'm not really concerned about being able to fill that position. I think we have a competitive wage and benefit package for that position. The halftime records clerk job, we'll see what happens. I mean, it's hard to find part-time help, because people are usually looking for benefits, but we're going to do our best. I feel like, under City Administrator Kinzer's guidance and leadership, we have a good proposal, and we'll be okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the next resolution.
Resolution approving a facility lease agreement with the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging through December 31, 2019.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, following our meeting on the 29th, you directed me to talk with both of the entities that rent space, the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging. With who this lease is proposed is the group that rents the upstairs space, and so we talked about the deadline of December 31 of 2019. They were agreeable to that. In my meeting with them, we also talked about facility needs and space needs, and there's a conversation that started there with the Central Business District and a few other locations based on what they're looking for. But ultimately, the lease that's presented before you hear tonight is something that was agreeable to their management that is out of the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area.
Any questions or comments?
I was told that they just got through putting all-new facilities in upstairs. Is that correct?
I don't think it was, I'm not sure when it happened, but that was, there were some improvements that were made to the building. They've kind of, in the memo, they've described their relationship with Valley Services. They did state that their agreement with Valley Services does not require them to provide a facility with a kitchen, that that's ultimately Valley's obligation to find that space. However, their preference would be to be co-located, and so that's one of the things that I'm trying to help them look for at this point in time.
Okay, thanks.
Any other councilor comments or questions? Then let's go to public comment.
I'm Keith Olson, a former Marshalltown resident for 71 years. I hope I live long enough and enjoy the seniors' center. My mother was an active member there, after being a nurse consultant for, she went up there for over 25 years, and you really can't beat her in 500. She died with dignity, and I'm real concerned, because she had a walker. She'd drive up there, park her car, get in, second-floor elevator to eat. She went there often and had quite a group of friends that really enriched her life toward the end, and I can't imagine why that can't be upgraded and continued, so maybe some of us could also enjoy some social. I mean, they have all kinds of activities. Yes, the shuffleboard is permanent, and that's a big deal to some people, but I really, I've been up there lots of times, celebrate birthdays with her and family get-togethers, and we have to honor the aging population. I'm just kind of like, I can't imagine a more convenient place. When I couldn't get in the parking lot to visit, I'd go next door in that parking lot. So, I'm hoping you can work out something to honor the seniors, and hopefully, we all make it to there.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Kathy Waltermeier, I'm also a Marshalltown resident. In full disclosure, I did work in that building for over 24 years. And as you're going through this process, I would ask each and every one of you council members, Ms. Kinzer, Mayor Greer, that you please go over to the building, talk to the people that are there, look at what's there, see what's needed, talk to the people that participate there, and have an idea so that we don't end up with a 10-by-12 room with two card tables and a coffee maker. That's not really a senior center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
That has carried. Madam Clerk, would you read the next resolution?
Resolution approving contract change order number for the police and fire headquarters project floor coverings for Allied Construction Services, an increase of $2,801.
Good evening, Public Works Director Justin Nickel. I'll be at the podium for the next several items, but Jessica, if you'd open the story For the council's knowledge, I'll walk you through the list of the next 10 items, or eight items that we're going to approve. I'm going to start at the top of the list. For CR 023 Workshop Heater is for the installation of electric water heater, the piping, the expansion tank, everything that's necessary in the washroom at the, let's see, it'd be the north end of the apparatus bay for the fire department. There was a wash sink in there, but it didn't have hot water, so this is to add so that we have hot water for them to wash their hands and wash things in the sink. I'll go through the list, and then we can certainly answer questions after that. Next item, CR 025, is for wall heater circuits. This is for the installation of the electronic, or sorry, for the electric cabling and the conduit and all that that's necessary to install electric wall heaters in the front entrance lobby area. Next item, CR 030 ASI number 14, is a revision to replace plastic laminate countertops. The next item, CR 031, is for, to modify concrete block installation in the lobby area to accommodate a new bulletin board installation, as well as a prescription drug drop box. Next item, CR 032, booking exterior east wall, is to replace windows that the staff felt were unnecessary with masonry block to make sure that the privacy is being protected in that area. The next item, CR 033, emergency eye wash modifications, is to revise the emergency eye and face washing station. The next item, CR 034, garbage disposals in the break room is pretty self-explanatory. Provide and install garbage disposals into break rooms. The next item, CCD 002, is sanitary manhole. This is for installation of a manhole in lieu of two-way handhole cleanouts to provide for better maintenance options for our new facility. CCD 003 is imported sand for exposed, burnished concrete slabs. Our current ready-mix... Our current ready-mix providers provide the sand that comes from the local area, which is usually fine for flatwork, for driveways, sidewalks, things like that, but in our burnished concrete slabs, those are going to be polished and colored, so it's going to look much nicer. So we've decided that we would import sand to make sure that we don't have the problems that we do with chemical reactivity and then having pop-outs and a disfigured burnished floor. And the last item, CO number 004, is for the application of temporary seating and mulching to make sure that our site stays within our own requirements, both city and Iowa DNR for erosion control at the site. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions or turn it over to either one of the chiefs or story construction to answer questions.
Does this money come from the underbid money?
Yes, if you want to think of that, Councilor Hoop, it all comes from the 17 and 1/2 million that we have, yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Lamer?
I have a little trouble with the lobby one.
With the lobby heaters?
I don't know why we didn't have heaters to start with, but, and then we're going to modify the wall, and it's going to cost us almost $1,700 for a bulletin board?
We have to modify the block wall. It's got a, I can look it up for you, but it's got the burnished, or not the burnished, it's got the irregularly faced block. So we're going to use a smooth block, I believe, in lieu of, to be able to install this bulletin board that staff is requesting and the drug drop-off.
Okay. I think the total here is what, 157,000?
153.
37,662.
But the whole package, you're talking about the whole package.
So.
37 on this one, but the whole change orders.
Okay.
Here's what it is.
Yeah, the total change orders to date is 152,000. Yeah. I just, I thought we already worked on some flooring problems before, once before, and changed the change order for that, then we'd get another one. I'd just like to see us go through a council meeting with none of these and watch the building go up so we can get in it.
It's a continuous process. I saved, you can see that I lumped together eight or 10 of these and saved them for two months to bring in to you, so we don't go through every meeting approving two or three change orders per meeting.
Your Honor, I have not been through a major building project like this before, so can you explain to me, is this normal within this large of a project to have these change orders? And are we still within the contingency budgets that we have? And when, and I assume that you'll let us know when we're getting to where we are no longer within that contingency or that there are changes that are optional. So I think I gave you about three questions there.
Remind me if I forget any. As I explained to the council throughout the last couple of years, this is my first vertical construction building project as well, but I'll use my experience on civil projects, roads, sewers, bridges, water lines. Any project, any, in my opinion, any good project estimates that yes, there will be changes. Anywhere on the order of 3% to 5% would be an industry standard. I believe the 150 would still put us at less than half a percent of what we've constructed today. My answer to the council would be this is well within the tolerance of what we have for change orders. To answer your second question, yes, we are still far from exceeding our budget of 17 and 1/2. It's actually greater than that when you calculate the interest that we compound. I would state that I go to the meetings every week and sit there with the two fire chiefs and story construction. These are items that the staff feel will help their departments utilize this building to its fullest potential. If there's something that is unsatisfactory to the council, we can certainly reexamine it, but I would commend story on working through with every one of the contractors. Some of these numbers that you see in final draft here are not what the first numbers were. Might have been two or three times this amount, so story works diligently on our behalf to make sure that we're getting the best price. Satisfy?
Well, it does. I appreciate your work in taking that diligence and watching because that's something that we can't do on a weekly basis of watching and with the chiefs to determine how important these items are. And I am trusting that the crews, the chiefs, and your department, as well as story, are looking at making the best possible facility for the most economical yet efficient price for us.
Thank you.
And one item that I'll just add as a preview to our June 25th meeting, we were going to do an update of just sort of the total fund and where things were, but we knew these items were on the agenda and we wanted to see if they would be approved. So at the June 25th meeting under discussion, we'll be doing a review of that police and fire building fund to bring you up to date on where we're at.
The one thing you have to keep in mind is we don't have 17 and 1/2. We had a number of other items that were included in that 17 and 1/2 million. We only had, the building came in at 14, wasn't it?
11, closer to 11.
So when he compares the numbers to 17 and 1/2, he's using a little lateral. Should be comparing it not to that. He should take out all the extra items that were at the bottom of the sheet, which were several million dollars that we are not going to do under the bond issue, which is questionable whether that's right or wrong. But, so I want you to use, not the 17 and 1/2, I want you to use the right numbers.
Sure, I can respect that. I still think of it as a total project cost, though, because we're responsible to the voters on that 17 and 1/2 million. I can, yep.
We just approved all the stormwater work and took it all out of there.
I can respect your opinion certainly, Counselor.
A bunch of it in there.
I see Ethan is here from Story County. Mr. Martin and I were given a tour recently, and it's pretty exciting to see how it's going up, and it's really interesting to see the trailer that they have where they've got the walls completely covered with every sub and every time, you know, the way they staged things in. That was pretty impressive.
Yes, I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Are we going to vote on these resolutions one at a time? I'm afraid we have to again. I don't understand why, nor why we have to have a roll call. Nobody's moved to approve it yet.
Stay close in case there's.
Yeah, don't go too far away. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll go with Isom as the second on that one. Further discussion? Let's call the roll on this one.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Carried, let's do the next resolution.
Resolution approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project, membrane roofing and wall panels for Black Hawk Roof Company, increase of $1,133.74.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried, resolution eight, please.
Resolution approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project, concrete foundations for Caliber Concrete, increase of $7,923.50.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carried, good. Next resolution, please.
Resolution approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project, site demolition and earthwork for construct, an increase of $8,330.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carried again.
Next item, please.
Resolution approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project, general supplies for Garland Construction, increase of $1,463.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Carried, next item.
Resolution approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project, gypsum wall assemblies for Hills of Beckshock, increase of $2,465.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carried again, next item.
Resolution approving contract change order for the police and fire headquarters project, plumbing and mechanical, Bretoni's Plumbing and Heating, an increase of $6,466.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Carried again, resolution 14, please.
Resolution approving contract change order number one for the PCC patching project, curb and gutter, remove and replace patches and flaggers, an increase of $61,574.23.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Again, items in 14 and 15 are two resolutions that we separated to keep the simplicity in our accounting. Both are for the improvements we made two years ago on 18th Avenue. The council may recall that the concrete pavement was in pretty dire need, and so we made repairs. Immediately after those repairs were made, we had some failures on about 20 to 30% of those patches. The project utilizing federal funds was let using the Iowa DOT contract documents, and as such, it did not have a warranty bond when we bid through the Iowa DOT. Staff and myself made the decision that we couldn't live with those concrete patches failing the way they were. Hence, we approved a change order to replace those failing patches. We did negotiate with a contractor to get a better price than what they wanted to charge us because we put some onus on them for failing materials and a failing project. We got agreeance from the Iowa DOT that they will pay 80% of this cost, just like they did for the original items that were not change orders. So resolution 109 is to what we call balance out our quantities at the end. Resolution 110 is then for those additional repairs that were made on the failing patches. Did I make it somewhat clear? And are there any questions I can answer for anyone?
Any questions?
I do have a question. Out of the 111,000, whatever the amount is, Iowa DOT is paying 80% of that?
Correct. That's correct.
And the contractor, you said they did take the onus to provide a better?
We negotiated somewhat on the bid prices, yes.
And is the, with their past history, was, what was the bid process going through for that?
When we originally bid the project?
Well, even now, you're going back to someone who provided a less than satisfactory project?
That's correct. I should point out, this work has been done for almost 12 months, so there's no going back at this point.
Okay.
But yes, I would say that the contractor was fair with us in admitting that they had made some mistakes in that the failing patches. Both sides had their ideas on why the patches failed. From an engineering or physics standpoint, I thought it was fairly clear. From their standpoint, they felt they were pretty clear. I'm not a judge. We do have two attorneys sitting behind the bench. I imagine had we gone to some kind of litigation, mediation, something like that, we would have come out with a middle ground solution. Again, I felt this was in the best interest of our taxpayers to get this repaired, and then felt quite lucky that the Iowa DOT agreed to pay 80% of these changes. They didn't have to do that, but I was glad they did. Their overall reputation, I'm not sure I want to speculate on that at the moment. We didn't have any indications when we opened bid that they were not capable of doing the work. And I know this is your first year, Counselor, but we do have certain situations in public works where we have to come out with a solution that works for all. It's not always black and white. I wish it was.
All right. Thank you.
So curious question now, do we have a warranty on the? We do not. Nope. Because it's still an Iowa DOT project, it does not include a warranty bond. When we let projects through Marshalltown with our own public, we do require that the contractor provide us with a warranty bond.
Other questions?
Are we going to get an engineer's certificate then, since this number 14 is actually finalizing the project?
Yes, that's an excellent point. I should say that we had staff working on this that no longer works here, and so we're kind of picking up the pieces after some time. That's an excellent point of which I hadn't thought of until now, yes. We will get, and actually, I'm in the clear because it will require the Iowa DOT to approve that as well, so it'll be a step that's coming on down the line.
Okay.
But you're right, we will get an engineer's statement of completion.
Okay, thank you. I would move, have we got a motion?
Not yet.
I'd move that we approve the resolution 2018-109.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carried, good, thanks.
Item number 15.
Resolution approving contract change order number two for the PCC patching project, remove and replace additional PCC patch and flaggers, increase of $53,077.73.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Carried again, resolution number 16, please.
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Carried again. Resolution number sixteen, please.
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Resolution number 111 is for an increase for Jasper Construction for repairs of the Center Street Bridge over Lynn Creek. As the council and the traveling public probably remembers, in November, a contractor started work on the Lynn Creek Bridge, excuse me, closest to Hy-Vee in the Fisher Community Center. We started work at the north end of the bridge. Once we were able to open up the construction and see what was inside, we realized the conditions were worse than we had initially expected. I came before the council and asked for authorizations to increase the contract to make improvements on that north abutment, and we discussed that we would put off the work on the south abutment until the spring. This change order in front of you is for the work completed on the south abutment this spring, which was better than the north abutment, but still worse, in worse condition than we expected when we began the project. Are there any questions I can answer for the council?
And has that work all been completed?
It is all completed. I should point out to the traveling public, because I get this question fairly frequently, the two bridges are separate. There is one bridge over the railroad and over Nevada Street, and then this bridge is separate. We do still need to make repairs to the Viaduct Bridge over the railroad and Nevada Street, but those repairs are likely two years away, if not further. I, too, suffered the pain of having to go around, but to keep our infrastructure in good standing and to make sure that it's safe, I feel that that's necessary.
Thank you.
I move for approval.
I second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Just a sec. We will get a certificate of completion on this, too, right? Very good. Thanks.
All right. Item number seventeen, please.
Public hearing relating to Amendment Number Seven to the Urban Renewal Plan Area Number Three.
This is an item that we actually cannot consider tonight. One of the things that happens in an urban renewal plan amendment process is that we have to have a consultation with our taxing entities, which we did. They have a set amount of time to which they can provide a response to that consultation, which the county did provide that response, and then it was my duty to provide a response back to them within seven days of the public hearing. So it would've been last Monday when I needed to provide that. I did prepare that, sent it to our attorney, and then I forgot to mail it out. And so, in consultation with our attorney this morning, he advised that we could not hold the public hearing or consideration of the items without being in violation of state code. And so, his recommendation was to reset a public hearing for this urban renewal area, an amendment submitted to this urban renewal area, for a date in the future. Given that I provided that notice to the county on Friday, June 11th, Monday, June 18th, at noon, would make the most sense for a special meeting at which we can hold the public hearing and consider the resolution and the first reading of the ordinance. And so, I would recommend that there be a motion to set the public hearing on Amendment Seven to Urban Renewal Area Number Three for Monday, June 18th, 2018, at 12:00 noon in city council chambers.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I so move, Your Honor.
I second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Carried. Thank you. Now to Category J ordinances. Would you read the first one, please?
Second reading and possible waiver of third reading for ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Six Streets and Sidewalks by repealing current language and adopting new language.
First, is there a motion to approve it?
I so move.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Public comment?
Yes, sir.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South Tenth Avenue. I would suggest the council table this. The state requires that the city have a... Actually, ADA requires that the city have a transition plan in place, and I've asked for that, and they can't find it. And according to the law, if you're getting federal highway funds, you must have a transition plan. And the transition plan would supersede any sidewalk ordinances. So, until the transition's plan's in place, I don't think you should be considering the sidewalk ordinances. But also, there are a couple of codes that you've chosen to pick and choose from, and one of them is the code to make the sidewalk one foot off of the property line. Most of our driveway approaches have the sidewalk section on the property line. Now, the SUDAS code that Justin refers to, 7030, allows for sidewalks to be on the property line, a foot off the property line, or from a building to the sidewalk, such as in a downtown area. And we're restricting it to just one choice. In the Iowa DOT code, it says if you're going to make a more restrictive process, plan, or code, you have to have that approved by the Department of Justice, I think it is. And so, that's a problem. And also, in the code, or in the new ordinance, you want to make a trail and an alternate sidewalk, which is fine, as long as it doesn't cut off another property. And in the case of MHS properties and Wayward Social, if you were to apply that as a deferment, you would cut off a property that lands between them from access to any other public sidewalks. So there's a bunch of cart before the horses here, and I think you should table it until you get this straightened out. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just to add staff comment, this is basically a restatement of many elements of our current sidewalk ordinance, while basically adding in the ADA requirements of a five-foot sidewalk. We do... We currently do not have an ADA transition plan. We did do some record searching, and though there was a requirement back in 1992 to have one, it does not appear that the city took any action at that time, or at any time in the nineties, to establish. I did issue a request for proposal for a consultant to conduct an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. At this point, I did exclude sidewalks, since we do have standards by which we will evaluate sidewalks and have volunteers going around and making those assessments in different sections of the town by year moving forward. That decision to exclude that from the scope of work was made due to the fact that we were already having that conversation. And so, that request for proposal is available on our website for anybody who is interested.
If there are no further comments, let's call a roll.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
No.
Martin.
No.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
No.
Hoop.
No.
Failed.
Okay. Let's go to the final ordinance, number two.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Twenty, prohibiting parking when snow removal operations are in progress, and Chapter Twenty, parking around schools. Second reading and possible waiver of third reading.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
To clarify, this is just for... Was a second reading.
I can make a motion to waive the third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Carried. Thank you. Now on to Category K, which is discussion, and the first discussion item is about identified sidewalk gaps.
Yes, this was...
Your Honor, can we talk about, if we need a transition plan, and you've got a consultant that you're already working with, can we go back and redo that RFP to that consultant and see if we can add that in so that we can meet all those requirements?
Yeah, so, the request for proposal is out there. Responses are not due until, I think, the 26th of the month, and so, I needed to do an addendum anyways, because I did forget to include bus stops as part of one of our public facilities. And so, I can certainly amend that in or put it in as an option, or an alternative, so that you would see what it would cost to do versus what we've proposed to do as well, so that you would have that ability to make that decision at that time of whether or not you want the consultant to do it.
I think it'd be really nice to put that in as an option and have them bid that as a separate item.
Okay.
Now, we're trying to cover all our bases here.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
So, one of the things, as we've talked about sidewalks, was talking about gaps. And we started with a list from 2008 of gaps that were identified by a sidewalk commission at that point in time, but were projects that were not completed. And so, we took that list and then added on what were public input comments or other areas that were identified by staff where things just hadn't happened, and we had no legal standing to order that sidewalk to be installed. And so, what you have in front of you is basically a listing of these, kind of sort of in what I would call sort of project terms. There are some of these that are smaller dollars where we would probably not complete maybe that in and of itself because of the mobilization costs. We would want to probably pair some of these together. And so, as you look through the list, I think the big thing to note is that there's a big dollar amount in total here of a little bit over two million, with being very generous on the contingency, because this was just a preliminary review by engineering. There are some of these where they've identified that there are likely grade issues and other things which could dramatically increase the cost of a sidewalk project. And so, really, the next step here, I think, is if these are sidewalk projects that are ones that you would potentially want to move forward with, they really do need to be prioritized. And so, that's why I'd recommend to the council to provide direction on, do you want staff to prioritize this? Would you, as the council, like to prioritize this, or is this something that you would like community input on as well, and then we can move forward with doing whatever you would like us to do in order to bring this back to you with sort of a schedule that hopefully we can then move forward with in adopting into our capital improvement plan as part of the next year's budget process.
I have a question. Are the costs noted on here, the 2008 costs or the 2018 costs?
2018. That was one of the concerns. There's... Because there's one project specifically that I know that I've had a conversation with the engineering department on, and it's the items that were around the fairgrounds. I think back in 2008, when those were initially looked at, that was an estimated $500,000 cost. Now, as you can see, that's upwards of $900,000 estimated, so things get more expensive as time goes by.
And can I ask a clarification also? On sidewalks, and especially in these areas, are they required to be on both sides of the street?
They... So, generally, it depends. And when you're talking about an area that's existing, that's a little bit harder to say, because what we're talking about are items where we have no legal standing to come in and say that something has happened in that property, or that it was a subdivision that was platted in a timeframe where now sidewalks have to be added. So, I would say, as we went through all of these, and I looked through the public comments as well, it was really looking at, were there sidewalks already on one side of the street, or was there truly a gap that existed? I can't speak to all of the ones that are on the list, but I think in most situations, it was just sidewalk on one side of the street. And so, I'd say that is what our initial priority should be. But if that's something, more information you would like in terms of prioritization as to whether, you know, this would be the only sidewalk in the area versus dual sidewalks, we can certainly provide that information to help you make a better choice, if that's how you'd like to do that.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
Your Honor, I guess I'd like to see that our staff make some recommendations with thorough council review before approval. I would like priority given to handicapped access to the streets already existing that needs to be done, not only to meet ADA, but to meet quality of life issues in Marshalltown. So, that would be my stance.
Thank you. Other input from anyone?
I would like to make sure that we cover all the school areas, and especially the major streets that feed to those schools, because we can get the sidewalks around the schools done, but if the kids can't have a sidewalk to go from point A to B to get to those sidewalks, it doesn't do us any good. So, I think we ought to look at the major streets that feed those sidewalks into those schools.
And so, you will note that one of the way that we did prioritize some of these as projects was by school, and most of those were areas where things had been existing. And we did that because, like, for Fisher Elementary, it would make no sense to just do one segment of the four that are identified, because you really need all of those working together to provide that as sort of a total project flow. And so, that's where we've tried to capture everything that was sort of around that school district, or that school that made sense for that type of project, or for including in that project. I'm not going to say that this is a perfect, you know, thing where we've captured everything, and so... But we certainly did try to look at that as we went forward with what was previously recommended, and then what is here before you tonight.
Other input?
Another thought. Since we got all these parks, maybe we ought to make sure that we have some kind of connection so the kids can get there, too. Maybe that would be a third or fourth priority down the line, but we ought to keep that in mind, that if we're going to develop them, we ought to make it so the kids can get there.
Anyone else like to speak?
We can do that, and we can see what that's going to add then to the total and look at a prioritization there.
Okay. Time for public comment, unless you need any more input.
I was going to say, just to make it clear, what we'll do then is, we'll go ahead and we'll review the parks element to that, and then we'll prioritize as staff, and we'll bring something back to you. I don't want to put a date range on it right now as to when that would come back, because I'm not sure when it would have time to come back. But just know that we'll be working on that.
Okay. And public comment is, members of the public may comment on any items that are not on the agenda at this phase. Again, approach to the mic and state your name and address. Limit your time to three minutes. Our rules also say that the mayor and consellers shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those items in order to comply with open meeting law.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Can I add one more thing before we switch?
You bet.
I'd like to know from Justin how he's coming with filling his staff up.
That was addressed in both of our weekly reports.
I know. I asked the question.
And so, we can reiterate that ultimately, hiring is still in process, so there's nothing to report.
So, he hasn't got them filled yet?
No.
So, when we ask for all this stuff to be put in priority, he hasn't got anybody to do that yet?
I was going to say, like, with the sidewalk information, I compiled all of it together and then gave it in a spreadsheet format, and it was a two-week turnaround for that to come back, which I thought was very good with the staffing that they had. So, we make do with what we have, and ultimately, that didn't delay where we had originally planned to have this conversation on sidewalk gaps.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Your Honor.
You bet. Now, anybody else wish to speak during the public comment time?
Hi, Whitney Hunt, 612 Forest Boulevard. I just had a question. I was reading the land use and community design packet, and this has always been a pet peeve of mine. You know, I want Marshalltown to be a better place, too. But if I was going to be building a business, or wanted to move a business here, and I was driving down Main Street, all those paper signs on streetfront property, and it specifically talks about that here. Can't you pass an ordinance where you can't do that? I mean, I would think it'd be a safety issue also. If the police are driving by, they can't see what's going on in there, and it just looks dumpy. You know, when you've got all these handmade signs that are torn and ripped, and I just don't understand that. That would make a huge difference, I think, in appearance, just a thought. I don't know. It just seems like that could be an ordinance for the city. Wouldn't cost any money, you know? It's just a... I don't know. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, or adjourned?